All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September 12th, 2023 Phoenixville Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we're conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually, and we are glad that you've decided to join us for this meeting tonight. During the public participation, public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hands digitally, and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name, allowing you to make your public comment. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight first, and then those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. We do ask that participation during each period is just limited to once per a public participation session. With that, thank you again for joining us tonight. We now begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance and moments of silence. With that, can we start with a roll call?
Mr. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carbonito.
President.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirkner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
President.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Manager, Chief of Police Solicitors, here you have a court.
Thank you very much. There are no presentations on tonight's agenda, so with that, we'll move into the first round of public participation. Any members joining us in council chambers tonight, if you will make your way to the podium, there is a sign-in sheet on the podium next to the microphone. If you can provide your name and address for our minutes, and also if you can announce your name and address when you begin speaking. We will start with any members who are joining us here in council chambers for participation tonight.
I have felt for the last month since the last meeting that something's different. There's been a positive change. Mr. Wagner at Fordham Grant is not the same guy.
Could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis Finstermacher.
Thank you.
He's only screamed once in the afternoon, and the cars are down from six to four. Actually, there's three cars and one van they're using for storage. The brown truck, which is illegal, is not being moved. I watch that very closely. It never goes on the road. And the two and a half ton truck that they have, they use as storage, and they do stop their work at the appropriate time before ten at night. There has been no burnouts because the truck can't get on the road. And there's only been one incidence of him speeding down the road where he could have killed someone. So things are getting the normal, and if you want to find out why, you would have to speak with Brian Marshall. I found out a piece of information tonight that I can't share publicly, but I'm very grateful to all of you. He made a major change at that location, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much.
My name is John Pearson. I'm a supervisor in Upper Providence Township. I'm here to promote the Wall That Heals that we've been honored to host this year in October. I seem a little bit nervous. I'm not used to being on this side of the table. Is everyone familiar with what the Wall That Heals is? If not, I'll explain it in brief. It's a three-quarter replica of the Vietnam Wall in Washington, DC. This wall is a traveling wall. We're bringing it to Upper Providence Township. The escort's going to come through the Borough of Phoenixville here. In the packet that I handed out, I apologize that I didn't have enough to go around the council here. It's going to start out in Kimberton there. It's going to go through all the municipalities that surround Upper Providence Township, where I'm here to notify I've been going to all council meetings, borough meetings to tell everybody about this event. It's a worthwhile cause. Also looking for any sponsorship that you may decide to offer. We're also in need of volunteers. Where to pull this thing off, we need 200-plus volunteers, and that's kind of a chore. On the brochure that I handed out, you'll see that there is a QR code for volunteers. You can go right onto that QR code, click it with your cell phones. It'll take you to our attach-up website. You can put in a time when you want to volunteer. They're going to be getting better at putting this thing together so that anybody that wants to volunteer at the same time, I think they're gonna, at the end of this month, it'll be a signup genius where you'll be able to go in there and pick a time. And if you want to do it with a friend, you can do it with a friend. You can get the same time. So we're looking for some volunteers. But the main reason that I'm here is I want you folks to know that we're bringing it through your municipality. And I'm hoping that the borough participates in this event. It's a worthwhile cause. Also wanted to bring your attention to the fact that the Borough of Phoenixville has six men on that wall. It would be a nice thing to honor those guys if you guys possibly could. So if you have any questions for me, I'm gonna leave it brief and short, so.
Sir, it's probably not because the council doesn't have questions, but it's because we limit public comment and we don't allow back and forth right here.
Totally understand.
Thank you, John.
My phone, that's my car. If anybody needs any information, please feel free to reach out to my personal cell phone there. Give you any information that you need, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul G324 Bridge Street. I was here two months ago, and I'm here to give a little bit of an update. First, Mr. Mayor, I owe an apology. I overstepped my bounds thinking you were responsible for something I said the last time I was here, and you corrected me on the street. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. We blamed it on you and you, but we'll get to that in a second. I want to speak to the chief. I've been in court numerous times in the last few weeks because I've been harassed numerous times outside of this building. I wanted to let you know that Officer Dobree has been stellar in his how he handled everything. We've got community service for the children who harassed me, the gentleman who spit on me, the man who threatened to beat me. I've been through a lot over this flag situation. So with that said, I have my three reports from here. I was harassed three years ago by a gentleman on Main Street at 10:20 on a Saturday morning. He called me [bleep]. Chased me down the street. I got away.
Sir, can we please not have any obscenities during public comment?
Pardon me?
Please no obscenities during public comment.
That's how I had to hear it.
I understand. I understand, but this is public comment at a governmental institution.
I will not do it again, but that's what happened, and I never pressed charges because I wanted to show him the compassion that he denied me. Three years later, we're here downstairs. I asked for a copy of the police report. I had never seen it. Everything that I had said was not in the police report, so that's when I got angry. So if I'm a little nuts about this, I have every right to be. I'm scared of this man. I have to see him all the time. That's neither here nor there. Then comes the three young boys who followed me and called me the P-word, excuse me, three times and chased me down the street for half an hour. We went in front of the judge. Two of them pleaded guilty, got community service because I said that's what I thought should happen. They were young. The other one pleaded not guilty, came in. We had a meeting. I told Brad that he could have community service. He came, I went to the courtroom. They came in with the family. The parents were there because they were juveniles. And the mother, surprisingly, stood up and parented and asked for anger management for her own son. I feel vindicated and all that as well. All I want is for the harassment to stop, the flag situation to be fixed, and our town to come back to what it was. I'm not angry. I'm hurt. I'm disappointed, and I'm scared sometimes. With that said, Mr. Dobree, Officer Dobree is aces in my book. Thank you all for listening. I'm sorry I offended anyone. Thank you for your time. Please do your job, and you as well. Thank you.
Is there anybody on the Zoom for public comment? Any members who are joining us on Zoom tonight, if you want to raise your hand digitally, we'll make our way through the queue.
Jane, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Jane Ducktail. I'm a resident of Morgan Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm here tonight because there's an event coming up at our Phoenixville Recreation Center that I'm hoping that the members of Borough Council here tonight would want to attend. It's in about three weeks. It's on a Thursday morning from nine to 12:00, and it's a workshop put on by French and Pickering Creeks Conservation Foundation about open space preservation in Northern Chester County and using that preservation as a tool to manage extreme weather impacts in Northern Chester County. I've been before the council several times to talk about the importance of preserving open space here in our borough. And I'm thinking that this workshop would be a wonderful way to put the need for open space in context. So I'm hoping that some, if not all of you, will find time to attend at least part of this workshop. It's October the 5th from nine to 12:00 at the Recreation Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Neil, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. My name is Neil Spiker. I live at 508 Franklin Avenue in Phoenixville, a half a block from Reservoir Park, directly across from the Recreation Building. I moved in here in February after living in East Whiteland for 43 years. I'm here to address a water pressure problem. I have 25 pounds of water pressure at my house. I have contacted Kalin Kronmeyer numerous times, sent him pictures of a water pressure gauge attached to my house showing 25 PSI. I tried calling. He doesn't answer the phone anymore. I suspect he may have blocked my number. I don't know. I don't know if council's aware of this. This guy seemed to be aware of it and said there was a study being done, and it seems like BS to me. I suggested in an email to him that maybe he should turn his water pressure down to 25 PSI and see what it's like to take a shower with 25 pounds of pressure. I'm just amazed and appalled that it seems as though the water department knows they have a problem, but will not address me as to what is being done and what they're going to do about it. In the meantime, I got a trickle of water. Now, my occupation is I'm a handyman. I do a lot of plumbing work, so having a gauge is easy because I've replaced a lot of water pressure regulators and I'm familiar with water pressure, what it should be. It should be at least 55 PSI. To have 25 is ridiculous. So I want to bring this to your attention and find out what can be done about it. Is there anybody in the Phoenixville Services Department that can say anything or comment or help me understand?
Mr. Spiker, if you want to reach out to either Rich Kirkner or Jesse Webb, they're your North Ward representatives. Their contact information is on our website at phoenixville.org. So either Rich or Jesse or both of them, they'd be the ones to contact directly for conversation on this.
Jesse who?
Jesse Webb or Rich Kirk.
Okay.
You'll find their contact forms right on our website, and that's probably the easiest way to relay the contact information.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Jason, I've turned on your microphone.
Great. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jason Camillo, and I live at 723 Wheatland Street, Apartment 107. I just moved here a few weeks ago, and I was going to initially bring up the sidewalk on Paradise Street that goes by the new firehouse, but apparently construction has begun on that, so that's purely coincidental, I guess. The second thing is I have a large dog, and I've noticed just coming into town, first off, it's super dog-friendly for the restaurants, and there's lots of places to sit outside, especially Friday, Saturday, Sunday with your dog. But I've been having a lot of trouble finding a restroom for myself to use that I could walk into with my dog. The only one through a lot of questioning I found was the porta potty under the Gay Street Bridge. And that I noticed today, the last time that was cleaned was August 31st, at least according to the sign outside of the porta potty. So maybe it's just ignorance. There's more places that you could bring a dog in to use the restroom, but I feel that a lot of single people who have a dog would go and utilize the restaurants and bars and other services more if there was a place to go to when they needed to use the restroom. So just wanted to pass on that feedback.
Thank you.
At this time, there's no more hands raised.
Okay, with that, we'll close the first round of public participation. Moving on to item five of tonight's agenda is our consent agenda. Any members of council wishing any items to be removed from the consent agenda or any questions on any items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, it is council's pleasure.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Much by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero. Moving on, we have communications and council participation. Any updates from any members of council on any items that are newsworthy?
Mr. President, yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know, if they didn't know already, that the build for the Phoenixville Firebird Festival did begin this Saturday and will continue every Saturday until the festival, which is December 9th. And thank you for council and all of the borough staff's support with that festival. I wanted to congratulate Blues Fest, which is back. I had the pleasure of volunteering at that festival over the weekend. And there will be a youth community service retreat at Ann's Heart put on by the J.C.'s and Ser Optimists on October 7th. So if there's any high schoolers in the Phoenixville area that would like community service and like to get more involved, there is information on the J.C.'s website for that.
Mr. Moore.
I'd just like to do two things to express my appreciation for getting awarded on the Maori Road. However, I'd like to definition of how to pronounce that name, but anyways, the formal pronunciation, but the rebuild, the multimodal transport grant, which was fully funded, and means that project will be moving forward along with the other grant we recently got on Bridge, the Bridge and Star rebuilt. Just really, just want to pay tribute to borough staff who are just doing an outstanding job, looking for and writing winning grants. So appreciate that very much. Every time we win a grant, it helps us do projects without having to raise our taxes individually. The second thing, I just thought I'd run through three things. Saturday's really busy day in terms of community events this coming Saturday, the 16th, the Andre Thornton Day, Andre Thornton Park on Main Street from one to four, the Wolf Jam in Reeves Park from 11:00 to 5:00, and Rhythm and Brew is from 6:00 to 10:00. So basically, get your coffee and then hang out down, hang out in three parts of the borough till it's all closed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other comments or council participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mr. Erschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are joining us here in the chambers, and thank you to everyone who's joining us remotely from home. A couple of updates that have happened in the past month. We just wanted to welcome all of our new teachers, as well as our new superintendent, Missy McTiernan, who joined the Phoenixville Area School District. So welcome to Phoenixville. Also, we wanted to thank our elected officials throughout Chester County who participated, and also Orion Communities and a number of community organizations, Ann's Heart here in the Borough of Phoenixville, who participated in Allies for Housing. It's become a yearly meeting that's been put together by our elected officials at the county level where we are having conversations around affordable housing, which is a challenge that we have, not only here within the Borough of Phoenixville, but throughout Chester County. And so very important topic that we were able to get together to discuss. We also had an incredible Blues Festival, so thank you so much to the organizers of the Blues Festival. That happened this last weekend in Reeves Park. Just a beautiful day, hours and hours of wonderful music in beautiful Reeves Park. Great to see everyone, and the weather held out. I wanted to take a moment to especially mention our gratitude to the junior ROTC at Phoenixville High School. They, along with the Phoenixville Fire Department and the Kimberton Fire Department and Tower Health, held a stair climb yesterday for 110 flights of stairs to commemorate the tragedy of 9/11, of course, which was yesterday. And so thank you to the junior ROTC for ensuring that as a community, we have a very unique and special way to remember that tragedy and certainly to reflect upon it. As Mr. Moore said, we have a lot of things coming up this Saturday. In addition to the events that he mentioned, we also have the Community Coalition is having their annual scavenger hunt that day, and the Community Coalition supports five nonprofits here within the Borough of Phoenixville. And so we're very grateful for their financial support to all of those nonprofits. On the 17th, that Sunday, you can see teams playing in a school-style field day, and all of the benefits of that go to the Phoenixville Free Clinic. So, once known as the clinic, we now are adopting their new name, which is the Phoenixville Free Clinic. On 9/23, we want to thank the J.C.'s. They'll be hosting Movie in the Park. That happens at the Rec Center. I'm sure you can find out. No, sorry. Reeves Park. Just kidding. Reeves Park. That's gonna be at Reeves Park. You can find out about it on Facebook, and I believe the movie is The Live Action Little Mermaid. So Movie in the Park, this 9/23, coming up in two weeks, and that will be in Reeves Park. On the 7th, and I believe 8th, that Saturday and Sunday of October, Jaeger's is having a fall festival, just another great community event, and that's out in Jaeger's Farm. Certainly, unfortunately, with some very sad news, I just wanted to take a moment to reflect and send our condolences to the family of Gwen Hagie, who passed away this last month. And so for those who knew Gwen, an incredible friend, a mentor, very involved in our Social Concerns Committee, very involved with Diversity in Action, and was really a pillar of the Phoenixville community. And so her presence will certainly be missed but not forgotten, and we will continue onward, certainly in her legacy of kindness and compassion that she will always be remembered for. I just want to also take a very special moment and acknowledge the Phoenixville Area, sorry, Phoenixville Police Department, and certainly all of our law enforcement agencies. I know this has been a very stressful time for a number of our residents as we continue to work towards as a community and as a region, the manhunt for Danilo Calabancante. And I just wanted to thank our police department. Certainly, we had some challenging situations over the weekend. I would encourage everyone, please remain vigilant, just make sure that you're getting your information from accurate sources. The best place probably on Facebook to look would be the Pennsylvania PA State Police Facebook page. They have kind of the most up-to-date and most accurate information. Certainly, we will do our best to inform you if anything impacts this area. But what I would ask is that she please make sure, just remain vigilant, make sure you're locking your cars, securing your vehicles, locking your homes, just as a precaution. I would tell you to do that anytime, day or night anyway. But I would just encourage you, please, 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 if you do have any questions, check out that website if you have any concerns, and certainly if you have any fear, please call 911 immediately. Our police department has done an incredible job coordinating with multiple law enforcement agencies and offices throughout Pennsylvania, and we continue in that collaboration every day, and we will continue to do so until this gentleman is brought to justice. And so thank you all very much. Thanks for being here, and thanks for making this a great place.
Thank you, Mayor Erschler. With that, section eight of our agenda tonight, appointments. We don't have any appointments pending at the moment, but we do have vacancies that exist on civil service, HARB, human relations, TAC, and zoning. So any members of the Phoenixville Borough community that are interested in stepping up and volunteering for one of the various boards or committees, please reach out to your Borough Council representative, and we will guide you through the process of volunteering for local government here. So with that, in item nine of new business, we do have a couple items that need to be discussed in the executive session. Ms. Berkeley.
I'll make a motion to recess into executive session.
Second.
Much by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Mr. Solicitor?
I would just like to add, for informational purposes, the executive session is for matters of personnel.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries eight-zero. We will be back momentarily from executive session. It is 7:45, and we are returning from executive session with, do we have a motion to return? Ms. Berkeley.
Motion to return to the regular scheduled council meeting.
Close enough.
Second.
Much by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Moving on, we have section nine of tonight's agenda, new business. Item A is a conditional offer. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to authorize staff to make a conditional offer to Chase Rondo for employment of patrol officer.
Second.
Much by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? And this is subsequent to all the batteries and backgrounds and various contingencies for it. Okay, very good. Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Moving right along, we have item B. We have a proposal for a minor change to our HARB process. What is council's pleasure with item B? Motion by Ms. Dugan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kirkner. Questions on the motion? This would be adding, Barry, I said, associated to the HARB meeting process, right? Okay, any other questions on the motion?
Will that entail additional funding for his attendance?
Yes, it will. Currently, as you, as some of you may know, staff was the member for the BCO. And we had, we just felt we needed to look at that from an outside resource versus an in-house resource. It was too close to what we were doing internally, and so we reached out to BIA, which does most of our construction inspection. They have somebody on staff that actually does this for other municipalities as well, so we asked them for a proposal. We have looked at the dollar amount. Uh, we, we have looked at the dollar amount, uh, the hourly amount, and we feel that we can manage that through both the application, uh, and our regular budget process.
And for the, the duration of the agreement, um, should it not work out, uh, what are we wed to on the, um? I didn't see in there how long of a commitment we might be making.
It, 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 it isn't till it isn't.
Okay, very good. I, I didn't see that, so I was hoping that was the answer. I'm hoping that it works out, but it was nice to know what the bookend is. Okay, any other questions on the motion?
Yes, sometimes Harb doesn't have meetings. Do we, do they still get paid?
Tenants required. Ms. Dugan? Agreed. See no other comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Uh, next up, we have our chemical bids for 2024, everybody's favorite topic. What is council's pleasure?
Motion to accept staff recommendation to award the 2024 chemical bids.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. With that, we will have, uh, uh, an announcement of the bids from staff here.
Sure, for, uh, so we, uh, for liquid, liquidated, uh, more. Say it right. Liquidated alum sulfate. Uh, that award will go to Thatcher Company. Uh, and the unit price for that, the, uh, total bid price for that is fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. For fluosilic acid, uh, that will go to, uh, Univar Solutions. Uh, and the total bid price for that is six thousand dollars. For potassium from a gannate. That goes to Brent Tag. Uh, the total bid price is eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty. For zinc orthophosphate, that goes to Coin Chemical. Uh, the total bid for that is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Hydrated lime in one ton lots, that goes to Univar at seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Soda ash goes to Brent Tag, uh, total bid is twenty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. And then ammonium sulfate goes to Univar Solutions for total bid of seventeen thousand, two hundred and ninety. Uh, we do, uh, every year we, we do brine salt, but we never get any bids and we wind up going through co-stars on brine salt.
Any questions on the bids? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, we have our, uh, the next step in our process of our CBA with our police department. What is council's pleasure? Ms. Berkeley?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve a tentative collective bargaining, bargaining agreement pending ratification from the Phoenixville Police Department.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on this motion?
Just to thank staff, um, I think this was excellent work and I'm really glad we're in a culture where this did go so well on both sides.
Seems, uh, uh, well suited for the taxpayers and, and the management and the police department, so I do appreciate it. Okay, seeing no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And lastly, under new business, we have a, um, a motion regarding Manco Gold. Uh, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we, uh, continue the engagement of Manco Gold Catcher Fox L L P for environmental and energy legal services related to the Phoenix Neo project at the wastewater plant.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Uh, motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Uh, any questions on this? Uh, we've retained Manco Gold for a number, for two, two years now. Uh, and the goal of this will actually get us to general permit, uh, with Phoenix Neo, so, uh, some, some goalposts are in sight now, which is a relief. Any other questions on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight oh. Next up on our item ten, we do have, uh, a resolution for our, uh, annual M M O, our municipal, minimum municipal obligation. As exciting as chemical bids, um, Ms. Berkeley?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the 2024 minimum municipal obligation for uniform and non-uniform pension plans.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion? Any background needed? We do this every year. Great. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight oh. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to section twelve, which is reports of committees, boards and commissions. Mr. Moore, would you like to kick us off with planning commission?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had two new projects, um, um, one, one new project and one ongoing project discussed at our last August meeting. Uh, no decisions were made. Uh, those projects are still in, uh, review. Um, the next meeting of the, uh, planning commission is this, so no action from that meeting. The next, um, meeting for this is this week, Thursday at, uh, the fourteenth, uh, at six P M.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Moving on to, uh, item B with Harb, we have Ms. Dugan. Second. Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Uh, motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss. Uh, we have the applicant here in person. If there's any questions for the applicant tonight?
Anyone want to make a talking up on here? Because I will actually say.
Sure. Yeah. Is your microphone on? I'm sorry. I just can't see your light from here, so I just want to make sure the new ones are working. Okay. I don't, I just didn't see the light, that's all. New system.
Yeah, I know, we'll figure this out. Okay. Um, I just thought that I'd mention this is not something you like to demolish things in the harbor. This is not a historic building. There are probably there is, um, really bad condition. There are no plans right now to do anything with it, but demolish it. Then we can do it by something. So I am.
And just for point of clarification, if something were to be reconstructed, it would again go through Harb and Planning Commission, just for.
Absolutely. All right, well, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments or questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight oh. With that, we'll move on. Uh, Mr. Kirchner with Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things come out of, uh, regional planning. One, a few months ago, I talked about a, uh, sketch plans for what was suspected to be an Amazon distribution center right on the borderline of the, uh, regional plan, um, area. Lineville Station Road and Route one thirteen out in Euclid Township, which is right next to, um, I believe it's West Pike Lynn Township, which is in the, the regional compact. Those plans have been withdrawn, those sketch plans, so that, um, for now is not going to happen. Uh, other, other news coming from the Regional Planning Committee is that, uh, Charlestown Township is taking steps to acquire the former Swiss Pines property on, well, on Charlestown Road, but it spreads all over Charlestown Township there. And anyone who's familiar with that is clean up the bamboo there and preserve, uh, the open space. This also includes the Great Valley Nature Center on Route twenty-nine. So it's, it's a large, uh, parcel that they're taking over. And also at the Regional Planning Committee, I reported on the presentation at the last meeting from Superintendent Fegley and, uh, School Board President Susan Turner about that out of left field proposal for the, uh, former kindergarten site and also the, um, Phoenixville Industrial, um, Park Site or, uh, whatever it's called now. I, I remember it as boiler engineering, so, um, old timers will recognize that. But I just wanted to share with them that, you know, this, this proposal came to us, was done in a public meeting. I didn't speak out of turn. Everything I talked about was, was from the public meeting. But I, I just put it out there for their notification. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Uh, Ms. Dugan, record.
Hey, we are busy. We have lots of programs. So we've got the A A R P Driver Safety Course. That is for, uh, mature drivers to improve, uh, their abilities and that's September twelfth and thirteenth from nine thirty to one o'clock. The Phoenixville Ball Classic Pickleball Tournament, that's a tradition sports, uh, Madison Park, October seventh eighth. The Fall Festival Trump or Treat, October twenty-eighth, uh, from twelve to three. Open Gym, the Rec Center requires registration to enter safety if everyone's, so you can sign up for that, but Open Gym is Monday to Thursday from three thirty, five thirty, Fridays from three thirty, four thirty. Snappology School Break Workshop, that's Monday, September twenty-fifth from nine thirty to twelve for ages five to fourteen. And it's Snappology Steen Survivor, that's a challenge and kind of like on Survivor, that's on Mondays, October sixteenth to November twenty-seventh from six to seven for six to twelve-year-olds. Skate Club, learning the fundamentals of skateboarding, that's Laura Street Park, Tuesdays, October third to October twenty-fourth from four forty-five to five forty-five. Uh, Skate Day, uh, Skate Club Half Day, that's Laura Street on Friday, October twentieth.
Can no one hear me here?
Here we go.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, um, I'm not going to start over. Okay, so we have a skate club from, uh, for the half day that on, uh, October twentieth from, uh, on one o'clock to three o'clock. T-Bird T-Ball at Friendship Patnaddle Field, uh, September ninth to October fourteenth from nine A M. to ten A M. and ten A M. to eleven A M. So that's three to five-year-olds. Soccer Shots is on Tuesdays, September fifth to October tenth. And also on Saturdays from eight forty-five to ten, Sunday, eight forty-five to ten. Just check the web, website for more information because there's breakdowns in age. Um, Youth Rembrandt's Fall and Winter Session, they have one on Saturday, October twenty-fourth to December, uh, with no class on December second. A winter session, December ninth to January twenty-seventh, that's ages one to three, three to five, five to twelve. Have to check the website for which one you would, uh, want to enroll in. Young Rembrandt's Special Events at the Rec Center, that's, uh, for, for the Halloween theme. One is October thirtieth and November twentieth is Thanksgiving theme, and that's from six to seven. Uh, then we have Badminton Lessons, and that's at the Rec Center on, from, uh, Saturday from September sixteen, uh, sixteen, thirteenth and thirtieth from ten A M. to eleven A M. Circuit Class with Core, that's Thursday, September seventh to November sixteenth from six to six forty-five. We have Fall Cooking Workshops for, uh, adults, that's, uh, October seventh to November fourth from one P M. to three P M. And October eleventh and October twenty-fifth, uh, that's on the Wednesdays. Uh, that's a different one, another one, check the website. We have monthly woke yoga workshops. The next one will be October eighth for the Keegong, uh, version of that one. Ballet classes are, have started, that's every Saturday in September from nine thirty to ten thirty. Smashville Pickleball Clinics at the Rec Center, October twenty-sixth to December seventh. And they have novice classes and intermediate classes. So much fun, which always produces so much fun things. Uh, that's at the Rec Center, Tuesday, September nineteenth to October twenty-fourth. Uh, youth is from four to five thirty, and the adult is from six to seven thirty. Uh, youth yoga, there are lots of dates and times for this depending on four to six, seven to ten, uh, twelve, uh, eleven to thirteen. You gotta check for that one because there's way too many options. Youth Pickleball, that's, uh, for eight to fourteen years old on, that starts October twentieth to December first from four to five. And finally, Zumbini, and this is a, a program where, uh, it's for zero to four-year-olds. So you bring, uh, let you and your little one wiggle, sing and learn together. It's a program where science and development means the magic of Zumba. And that is Tuesdays, October third to December fifth from eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five P M. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Ms. Berkeley with Tree Advisory Committee? Question?
Uh, thank you. Uh, we are, the Tree Advisory Commission is working to schedule their fall planting. It'll be the beginning of November. They're still working on a date. There'll be twenty-five trees, um, that we've contracted for. We also have plantings that'll be done, um, you know, through Bureau Contract. There's eighty-five trees and TAC and the Arborist are, um, giving recommendations on species for those locations that Alexis has plotted out, which again, another shout out to her. She's done an amazing job with managing these things. Um, we also, I thought it was exciting. I came in in the, or the end of the meeting, but they were looking at planning commissioning plans. So I know that's something that a lot of people were advocating for, that the Tree Advisory Commission got to look at development plans and, and comment on the trees and that, and, um, such. So that is something that we've moved forward with and it is part of their discussions. Another, um, concern that was brought about through correspondence with a constituent was that we're just, you know, because we're in contract with Pro Mark, we're just kicking down trees to fulfill a contract. And I just want to make sure that people understand that that is not how it operates. We're not taking down a tree unless the arborist has reviewed it and seen that there is a reason for it to come down, and he is giving that, um, reasoning. So it's not just to fulfill a contract. It's, hey, we have this contract and these are the trees that need to go down. Um, so I just want to make that point of clarification because I wouldn't want anybody to think otherwise.
Thank you. And going right into, uh, council action referred from, uh, committees, uh, Ms. Berkeley with police, uh, sorry, personnel and public safety?
Um, we covered a, a lot, uh, with our other motions earlier, uh, which is exciting. Uh, just to reiterate what you had mentioned before, we do have openings on zoning hearing board, civil service. We have, um, alternates open. TAC, I believe we're going to fill, but it is still there. Um, H R C has two and Harb has one. And I will give a little shout out to our H R C, our Human Relations Commission. They have started meeting regularly. If someone is interested, they are looking in the new year to do a lot of proactive presence within the community. And I really, um, honor and embrace that. If anybody else is interested in getting involved, we do, um, have two spots, um, for appointment.
Thank you. Mr. Moore with Parks and Recreation Committee?
Uh, really nothing to report that wasn't already covered in the consent agenda. So just report that next, our next meeting of the committee is next Tuesday, the nineteenth at six.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchner with policy?
No action to report, Mr. President, but at the last meeting, we did spend quite a bit of time reviewing the plastic bag ordinance. And I believe at the next meeting, that will come back to us, a, a new draft of that for further vetting and discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss with I T T S?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, just wanted to echo, uh, statements, I believe, by Mr. Moore earlier, just celebrating the two, uh, grants that we recently received. Uh, one was a Penn Dot, uh, multimodal, uh, what's the F stand for? Fund, multimodal fund, uh, uh, from Penn Dot, uh, that we received, and also a community revitalization grant from the county. Um, both are going to go towards projects that have been on our agenda for, uh, quite some times. We're very excited to put that money to good work, um, and, uh, and, uh, very happy to have received those grants. Um, other than that, we've got a lot of projects still going on. Uh, our next meeting is going to be one week from tonight on the nineteenth at seven P M. And, uh, we invite anybody to come and join us in those meetings. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. With that, uh, finance with Ms. Dugan?
Well, I'm not going to make this motion since I'm the one who voted against it, but I would like to comment after it's made.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Command Associates to complete a feasibility study regarding church street traffic and circulation as recommended in committee three, two, one.
Second. That was close. Uh, motion by Mr. Weiss. I'm going to give it to Mr. Moore. It's close. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Okay, so questions on the motion? We'll start with, we'll start with Ms. Dugan.
Okay, well, the reason that I was not in favor of this is because I don't think it's a fantastic idea to spend like eighty-five hundred dollars or something in that vicinity, I don't remember exactly, um, to do a study to find out if it's okay if we make church street at that section two ways. And the thing I'm most concerned about is losing, uh, Mr. Crack, I believe you said, eight parking spots. Down in that area, I find it kind of, um, not like the best idea to get rid of parking spots in that area. When we've got people, there's always projects going up and this, all anybody ever talks about is how hard it is to find parking. projects going up and this, all anybody ever talks about is how hard it is to find parking. And then we are proposing to study if we want to take away those eight parking spots, if we're allowed to even do that. So I have a little bit of a, an issue with that.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on this motion?
Mr. Kirchner? I just have one. Where does the money come from to pay for this?
General fund.
Uh, I'll, I'll just offer, I voted for it because I think we ought to just answer the question. I mean, it's, it is still weird that Church Street is two-way except for that last block. So I think we, I think it needs studying, and I think it's the appropriate expenditure.
And I'll just add, since it is my word, I had a lot to say about it when we discussed it in committee. I had a lot of questions. I did really ask, dive deep and ask a lot of questions. Living there, volunteering there, working there, there's a lot of good reason to look at this. I don't want to make the wrong decision, but it could help. Um, I don't want to jump forth without having data to make that decision, but it's not just taking away eight parking spots, it could make the, like, walkability much better, all those things. So that's why I think it is worthwhile for us to invest in the study.
Uh, I was just gonna add on to, um, Ms. Berkeley's comments. There are some subtleties about the road that I think are really important that we, uh, consider and that we fund this study to understand. Then road narrows at certain points in ways that I think, um, we need to professionally evaluate and understand to make an informed decision about it. Um, there are also some other more intricate subtleties about it, but that's like glaring one that pops up from the conversations that we've had about it to date. Uh, so just wanted to throw that in the conversation.
All right, any other questions, comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven one. With that, we'll, uh, conclude section thirteen.
Mr., uh, just like to remind you that we have sw- flipped the times uh, for the Finance Committee and the, I guess, I T T.
Policy.
Policy. So Finance will meet at seven, next, on our next date.
Yes, so, so Policy will meet at six P M. and Finance will meet at seven P M. starting this month, uh, until the budget is tied up. So, uh, we'll, um, thank you for that reminder, yes. And we'll have that posted on the website and all the other various places that we posted that item. So, uh, traditional to our fall committee schedule. Okay, with that, we will, uh, close council action referred from committees and open up our second and final round of public participation. If members were joining or weren't here at the beginning, uh, if you want to raise your hand digitally, if you're joining us via Zoom, uh, if you're here, uh, in person, please make your way to the podium. Uh, there is a sign-in sheet, please provide your name and address, and then also when, uh, when speaking, just announce your, your name, and, and if you're a borough resident. And then if you're on Zoom, if you want to raise your hand digitally, we will, uh, work our way through the queue that's in the room currently and move on to the Zoom platform after that.
Good evening. I'm Irene Halli, I'm a resident, and I want to know, what is this regional roundtable that is being presented, right? And to whom is that addressed? Also, I wanted to know about the, um, the proposed meetings for the, um, new zoning that'll be coming out. Are there meetings for that? And where are they? What time? What day? Okay?
Not seeing anybody joining us via Zoom, and we've worked our way through the queue in the room. We will close the second and final round of public participation and move on to section fifteen, which is Communications Council Participation. If there's any other comments, questions, or, um, mentions that the, the council wanted to make. Okay, moving on to staff reports. I do believe we have a update from the, uh, from the manager?
Sure, I do. Um, let me get that right, Doc. So, uh, in, in answer to the, to the question, the regional roundtable uh, is being put together by Upper Providence Township, uh, they're bringing uh, members of, uh, uh, the electeds, uh, and members of staff from the Collegeville Limerick, Laurel Providence, Perkerman, Phoenixville, Roersford, Trap, uh, to continue, uh, discussion that we've had over the last couple of years on how to read, how we can work as a region, uh, on different, uh, uh, issues. Uh, EMS was a big one, as everybody remembers from last year. Uh, but also, uh, uh, MS four stormwater mandates, uh, regional grant opportunities, uh, just to name a few, so uh, they've asked me to reach out to the members of council. I've, I've identified members of staff already. Uh, but for those members of council that would want to participate in this, if you can just get back to me, let me know. Um, it's, uh, it's scheduled for October twelfth, it's, uh, nine o'clock in the morning, uh, at Upper Providence Township. Uh, so I just need to, if anyone of council is interested, uh, we'll have our staff members there for sure.
I think it's a very useful thing, and I, I'm glad that Tim is up putting this together because it's, uh, I think the EMS.
Yeah, I think this would be, this would be our fourth, uh, dialogue that we've had over the course of the, last year, if, uh, the EMS issue really consumed a lot of the dialogue. It took away from all the other things we were looking at. And then the other, uh, in answer to the question, uh, it is on our website, the Regional Task Force, uh, is scheduled for, uh, zoning task force is, uh, September twenty-seventh uh, at five o'clock here, uh, in the, in the chambers here. Uh, we don't have the, uh, a schedule of meetings because it's not, uh, it's not a periodicity, uh, such as regular council meetings and regular committee meetings. We'll work, uh, until we need to have the next meeting, then we'll, uh, set that up. And all of that information's on our website now, so you can go to the website and, and find out when the next meeting is. You can find the summaries of previous meetings or anything else that we have with regard to the zoning update.
Thank you. Uh, in your packet was, uh, police, fire, planning, public works, finance, human relations, and or sorry, human resources and recreation. So if there's any, you know, any comments on any of the staff reports. Seeing none, uh, just as a, a formal announcement, last month, uh, council did meet in executive session on August eighth, twenty twenty-three to discuss the matters of personnel, real estate, and litigation, um, which we will have to do again tonight, so, uh, I do not believe it will be voting, so this will be a adjournment into, so Ms. Berkeley?
Motion to adjourn into executive session, um, for purposes of real estate and litigation. Do we also have personnel, Mr. Listener?
We do not.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We are now adjourned into executive session. Thank you very much, everybody joining us tonight, and we'll see you next month.